I think that was really useful.
Counselor Zadi, can you hear us?
No.
Welcome to tonight's pre-meeting study session, April 28th, 2025. We have first on the, I don't think I saw any new questions for the meeting. That brings us to council reports. Counselor Zadi?
None.
Counselor Ha?
Yeah, I went to the Jeffco Schools Foundation Gala and it's actually one of my favorite galas of the year because they have artwork from all the different high school students from all the Jeffco High Schools and I'm telling you that these kids are, their art pieces are better than a lot of the professional stuff I see. It was just amazing. I was kind of sad that I couldn't buy some other pieces. But yeah, our kids are really, really talented and it was nice to see the kids showcased and it was just a really nice event.
Counselor Camelia? It was a really, really busy week, so I'll try to be quick. But on Tuesday, CC4CA reached out. They reached out for a couple bills. This is the first one that I had room in my schedule to fit in. But I testified for the embodied carbon reduction program last minute, which is just trying to reduce carbon in materials like steel and concrete and asphalt. So it seemed like an easy one to do. And then on Wednesday, I attended the 44th Annual Governor's Holocaust Remembrance Program and that was very impactful and I'm really grateful that he puts that on every year. And I met a lot of interesting individuals and they had, I just really encourage folks to attend if they're ever, if they're ever able to at some point. It was a really great gathering of the community of folks that are right here in our Denver metro area that a lot of them are survivors themselves, which is interesting to see so many people in one room with a direct correlation. And a lot of the businesses that they mentioned in that room were people that had moved here after the war. And that was interesting too, just learning about a lot of the local businesses in our area that were directly from survivors of the Holocaust. And then I also attended, with Counselor Ha, I was there as well, the Sip and Support Gala for the Jeffco Schools Foundation. That was really incredible, very impressive work. And I got to hear the choir, which was amazing. They were very talented students there, absolutely. And then the Casa Light of Hope luncheon was also very powerful and that one, if you ever have room in your schedule, it's a very large volunteer project. But if you can become a CASA volunteer, I highly recommend it because that's something you're directly, directly helping one child's future and giving them the ability to potentially go to school and college and have a future when a lot of times those kids have never had anyone to invest in them before. So that was also a very powerful event. Then I attended the Maker Grand Opening Ceremony with Mayor McNally. I can't, who else was there? I'm not sure. I think it was just us. Okay. That was really exciting. I'm so excited that Maker is on their feet now. They've got the clinic open in down in South Westminster and it sounds like they're going to have a couple other locations soon. One in Westy High School and one in Uplands. That one we've discussed on council. And those are both coming, I think, later this year. So that's really exciting. There's several locations helping out our community's kids. Had a really successful coffee chat this last Saturday at Nava Coffee House at 9:30 and that'll be the last Saturday morning, or not the last, the fourth, I need to clarify. If you ever want to join me there, that was, I ended up staying really late for some good conversations. So thank you for those who showed up. And then attended the luncheon with the Great Global Cleanup Crew with Counselor Demat and the mayor and just, you know, thanked all the volunteers. So you think we had over a thousand volunteers that helped clean up Westminster. So that was really impressive. Thanks to everyone who did that for Earth Day. And then biggest shout out of all, I do want to mention this again on the dais, is our Arts Show, Arts Week has launched. And so that launched on this Saturday. It's going throughout the week. There are events all over the city happening at once simultaneously. It's hard to be everywhere at once, but I just want to give this a major shout out because I attended the Orchard Town Center launch on Saturday and it was incredible. There were muralists and there was chalk art and there were kids doing finger painting and there was music. And it was just incredible. It was all the things that I think we want to see in our city and it was a great gathering outside just to walk around and chat with people and interact with each other. And it really brought the businesses to life as well because we had some of the muralists inside the businesses at some of the coffee centers and oil and olive, et cetera. Anyway, that was really incredible. So I want to shout out that again and make sure people really know there's too many things to list going on for Arts Week, but please check out the Westminster webpage to find out all the events. And there will be an event happening tomorrow night at Westminster Public High School. And I'll be speaking there just on the importance of the arts in our city and all the opportunities and ways that you can get involved. So that's it.
Counselor Ireland?
Okay, this one item heads up. I had a resident tell me they can't find our email for city council, just individual ones they can find on the website, but not the ones as a whole. So they have to send it to us each individually. They can't find it. And I looked and I couldn't find it either anyway, just so you know. I also attended Jefferson County Schools Foundation, great event, great art. I appreciate art. I have three artists in my own family. My daughters were, all did art in high school. I went to the Historic Landmark Port or I listened to it online. They talked a lot about the archives at College Hill Library. And if there's anyone in our city that has pit photos or old history that they'd like to contribute, they'd love to have it there. They also have a meeting coming up June 4th about the rodeo, if it's being preserved how historically they want it preserved. There will be a meeting if anyone wants to know about that at seven o'clock on the 4th here of June. See what else. Of course, there is like tours coming up. The first one's in June. Hopefully they're on the website of historical landmarks. That sounds kind of interesting. The first one I read was about different ponds and lakes and the history of them and letting pitbull fish. So it's kind of a fun Father's Day activity in June. So anyone out there want to do that? I tried to attend the AdCog meeting online. The link never came to me. So heads up, I need the link for that every time there's a meeting. I did go to Arbor Day event with the mayor at Amherst and the fifth graders came and helped plant trees, which was great. I think the city planted 30 trees there with the help of the kids. That was a good event and all they all got to take a little tree home with them to plant in their own yard. So now we'll have more trees in our city, which I, you know, I love trees. I went to the CASA Light of Hope. I have you know, I look up nonprofits 990s. This is really a nonprofit. They're mostly volunteers. Their CEO makes slightly over 100, but the rest of them make nothing. Those are the kind of nonprofits that I feel like are nonprofit, whether there are a lot of volunteers and that CEO making big money. So I appreciate what they do. I think it's great and it makes a real impact on these kids' lives. I think that's it. I tried to go Saturday to the luncheon for the Global Reach, but my husband thought he might have a blood clot from his surgery. So that's why he wasn't there. But I appreciate all the volunteers and all the people in our city that volunteered to make their city more beautiful. Thank you very much.
Counselor Demat?
The, like some of the other council members and the mayor, I attended the luncheon for the cleanup. And the one thing I would point out is the amount of people who brought their kids to clean up, which I think is great because they're teaching the next generation about taking care of our community. Plus, there was one young lady who was so excited when she won something. I'm certain that she will remember that for the rest of her life. So it was a good event and I thank Parks and Rec for putting that on to make sure to take care of the community members who came out and volunteered.
Mayor Potem?
So last week I met with Dola briefly, very briefly, but they went over the, they wanted to talk about the 1313 and the calculations for that. And so that conversation, I know we've had multiple conversations around this, but I did ask the city manager to follow up with Dola regarding the, the way that they were calculating things seemed a lot less impactful. And it kind of changed my perspective a bit on the requirements. And so I just wanted to say that. I don't, and so the main thing out of that conversation was to send Mr. Andrews to Dola to just better understand, you know, do we have the right information? And so I'm sure Mr. Andrews will update us at some point on that. It was worth some follow up. I joined, or I was on the, I had a Front Range Passenger Rail Board meeting on Friday and that, the SDP, which is a service development plan that CDOT is doing for the Front Range, on behalf of the Front Range Passenger Rail Board for the first phase, that is going to be open online in May. So once that's open, I can circulate the information, you know, the link. And that will be more of a just community outreach. So people understand what's been studied, what does the first joint service phase look like. And then the board is also in the midst of working on an IGA with CDOT and RTD. So that's in process at the moment.
Stay tuned. The Westy Fire Department had their awards night. Great turnout of people and always great to see all of the achievements these people make and harrowing calls that they go on and the people's lives that they save. Had the Adams County Mayors and Commissioners Youth Awards evening last week and tremendous stories. Some of, we had four students that moved on into this awards area and powerful stories. Makes you feel like you don't have anything going on in your life when you hear these kids' stories. Native Meeting, I talked with Mayor Potem that we had somebody from Weld County come down and talk to us because they have worked on their segment of I-25. We've been working on our segment that's called the Crash Corridor, even by a couple of TV stations use it when they're sharing about where there's always a crash in the mornings. On I-25, it's where 36 and 270 and all of those things merge into that center part. And the folks up in Weld County realize they're not successful. While they've gotten some things done, if the crash corridor never gets accomplished, there'll always be, I call it the pinch point in an hourglass. It goes this way and it goes this way, but you have to go through the pinch point, which nobody can get through. So we talked with them about joining forces, went then from there to the Arbor Planting at Amherst Park, then caught up with the Bring Back the Kids to Work Day and over at the PD and know that they were going to have fun. They had the Batmobile there and dogs were going to be there. So they were going to have a great time. I just said hi to them and thanked them for being there. The Kids First Health Clinic, it took a long time. That was one of Maker's buildings that was built. And just as we had had somebody come recently and not want some things on that bottom floor. Alto has had a long, long journey of trying to get somebody to go in there. They always had hoped for a clinic and so that has sat empty for a very long time. And so was grateful to be there and see that it all came together. CASI event was fantastic and all of the stories we heard and they are so good. They start at 12. I mean, you are in your seat at 12, the food's there. You eat, you hear about, I don't know, six or seven stories and they are out. After asking for money, you are out of there at 12:55. It is an hour and boom, it's done. And they do just a fantastic job. Lori Poland this year, for those that were here years ago, the little girl that was left in the restroom pit up in Evergreen, she was the emcee. And then went to Great Global Cleanup. I know we had to switch dates, so I think that probably hurt some of our attendance, but those that were there and as Counselor Demat said, the ones with kids, they were so excited. I think two or three of those kids won, and they all had t-shirts, but they won other things, a tree or a bag and stuff. And they were just thrilled. So, and then I did stop by the Drug Drop Off PD was having that day and they had quite a, I never heard how many pounds they had or anything, but they had sacks and sacks of garbage bags stuffed in the corner. They were waiting for people to come. So a busy week. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Potem, City Council. I do have a report this evening. Or do it on the dais. Yeah. Why don't I just wait, do it on the dais?
Oh. Usually.
We've got 11 minutes. Okay, I'll wait. Good call. Yeah, thank you. I was gonna jump the gun.
Okay. So we can see everybody in 11 minutes at the dais?
Yep. Yep.
Okay.
Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the Westminster City Council meeting of April 28, 2025. We appreciate your attendance and would like to remind everyone that our meetings are governed by the rules of decorum, which are posted inside the chamber doors. These rules are in effect during all meetings, including breaks and transitions. To ensure a welcoming and respectful environment, we kindly ask everyone adhere to the following expectations. No attendee shall disrupt the meeting. Threats and intimidation are strictly prohibited. Audible expressions of support or opposition for any speaker are not allowed. Signs and placards are prohibited inside the chamber. All attendees must remain seated in the designated seats and refrain from occupying aisles or blocking doorways. Thank you for cooperation and understanding as we work together to maintain a productive and respectful meeting. If you are here to speak during the public comment, please sign up in the lobby. You have until 7:15. Roll call, please. Counselor Carmelia.
Motion to permit Counselor Azadi to participate remotely.
Second.
It's been moved in second to allow Counselor Azadi to participate remotely. All those, do you need a roll call?
No, you can voice vote.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I was going to do it after roll call. Roll call, please.
Counselor Carmelia.
Present. Counselor Demont.
Present.
Counselor Azadi. Counselor Haat.
Present.
Mayor McNally.
Here.
Mayor Protem Nermella.
Here.
And Counselor Ireland.
Here.
Brings us to the minutes of April 14. Counselor Demont.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the minutes of the April 14, 2025 City Council meeting as presented.
Mayor Protem.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve the minutes of April 14. There's no need for the discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to presentations, and we have the first one from Counselor Carmelia.
Thank you. Got confusing information. Oh, wait. Proclamation is up there, right?
Yep.
Mm-hmm. All right. Would everyone here, I'm not sure if this is on, that is here for Small Business Week come on up? Hello.
Hi. How are you today? Good, how are you?
Good.
I'm Claire.
What's your name?
Carla.
Carla?
Yes.
Would you introduce yourself to everyone, please?
Sure.
My name is Carla DiAgostino V. Hill, and I'm with Ignite Counseling Colorado.
Oh, fantastic. We were just at your opening.
Opening, that's right. Well, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
I see a few other folks here for our small businesses to be represented as well, so shout out to everyone in the room. Okay, whereas Westminster's economy is driven by small businesses which think big, take risks, and work hard, and whereas from the storefront shops to high-tech startups that keep Westminster on the cutting edge, small businesses are the backbone of our economy, and whereas small business owners have energy and passion for what they do, whereas when we support small business, jobs are created and Westminster preserves our culture, and whereas nearly 94% of our businesses are small businesses which create jobs and spur economic growth, and whereas National Small Business Week has been recognized every year since 1963 to highlight the programs and services available to entrepreneurs through the U.S. and Small Business Administration and other government agencies, and whereas small business is big business, and the city, the city's Economic Development Division, and the city's Thriving Chamber, and our local Small Business Development Center take an active role in advocacy, community development, and business development in Westminster, and whereas the city of Westminster supports and joins in this national effort to help small businesses do what they do best, grow businesses, create jobs, and ensure our small communities remain as vibrant tomorrow as they are today. Our communities, not small communities. Now therefore I, Nancy McNally, Mayor of City Westminster, Colorado, do hereby proclaim the week of May 4th to May 10th as Small Business Week, and I call upon the citizens of Westminster to recognize Small Business Week and support small businesses in our community, this week and every week. Shop local. All right. Do you want to talk a little bit more about what Ignite Counseling does before I take a photo?
Sure.
So, Ignite, and we are just down the street, so very proud to be part of the Westminster community. So, we are a mental health counseling practice that specializes in treating OCD, trauma, and addictions, but we see all manner of the human condition. So, we have a team of 13, and we've been proudly serving our community for over five years now.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You might be able to just hold it behind the back.
I'm just going to hold it.
Sounds good. All right, ready? One, two, three. One, one. One, two, three. Thanks, guys.
Stay here.
Next, Counselor Demont will do the Mental Health Awareness Month.
Can I get the folks that are here for the mental health proclamation to join me up I feel like Chief, you should be up here. I'm not sure why you're hiding in the back. It's very rare you get to call out the chief of police, so you're welcome.
I'm going to let you start on this end and introduce yourself and pass it on down.
My name is Norm Howard. I'm the chief of police.
Hi, my name is Mandy Carlson. I'm the Director of Communications for Jefferson Center for Mental Health.
Christian, I'm the chief of EMS.
Courtney Van Marter, I am the EMS Field Coordinator and Community Outreach.
Caitlin Hayden, I'm one of the coresponders clinicians that works for the Police Department.
Emily Gettleman, I'm the supervisor of the Coresponder Unit with the Police Department.
I'm Mariah Callahan. I am the Case Management Coordinator with the Westminster Police Department's Coresponder Unit.
My name's Adia Everson Demont. I'm Dave Demont's daughter.
So, I invited a special guest up here with me. There's a few of you who know that when I was very first on council through an experience of hers, we were able to actually have a conversation about mental health in one of my very first strategic plan sessions. And at the time Deputy Chief Reeves was working on a mental health coresponder program who you see here today. So, I thought it was appropriate for me to invite my daughter, who shared her story, to basically help break the stigma that is around mental health, because I could ask you to show hands, or I could read off all the stats that are in our packet, but I would gather that probably every one of you has been either touched by mental health problems yourself or somebody who you love. So, this is a very important thing, and you can see that the city of Westminster takes this very, very serious. For me, in the eight years, this is my last year of two terms, and this has been one of the things that I'm most proud of. These folks, what we've been able to do for our police and fire, I know that we had resources for them before, but through every council I've been on, we have doubled down and made sure that both our folks that work for the city, but the people who live in this city, get the help that they need, whether it's interaction with our police, our fire, our parks. It's a very important thing, and we want to make sure that folks get the help that they need so that they can, you know, live fulfilling lives, but that also our community understands there doesn't need to be a stigma around it, and if you need help, that you should get help. I'm wearing my semi-colon shirt today, if you know what this means. It means your story's not over. So, you know, it's very important, and I think it's great that the small business we chose is somebody who's in this profession, but I just wanted to say that and thank Adia for being able to be brave and come up here with me tonight. So, with that, I'm going to read the proclamation. Whereas the city is dedicated to improving the health and well-being of its employees and its residents by working to end the stigma and focus on a central role of mental health in all of our lives, and whereas Colorado is ranked 46th in the nation overall for the prevalence of mental health illness and access to care in 2024. Whereas good mental health is essential to the overall health and emotional well-being of all children, youth, adults, families, and promotes healthy community, and whereas when mental health problems, substance abuse, youth disorder are detected early and treated, people can recover and maintain a healthy and fulfilling life. And whereas it is imperative that we promote better pathways to care and make it easy as possible for employees, our community, to access mental health care while integrating mental health services and support systems into a variety of settings, and whereas we recognize we must dramatically expand the supply diversity and culture competency of our mental health and substance use workforce, and whereas increased focus on prevention and mental health conditions and substance use disorder among children, adolescents, and adults through screening and early intervention helps reduce suffering and improve outcomes. Whereas the month of May will include activities designed to increase awareness of mental health programs and resources that are available to those in need. Now therefore I, Nancy McNally, Mayor of the City of Westminster, on behalf of the entire City Council and staff proclaim the month of May Mental Health Awareness Month, and call upon the people of Westminster to recognize the month of May as Mental Health Awareness Month, signed this day, 28th of April, 2025. Nancy McNally, Mayor of City Westminster.
Let's do two rows. Can I get four people on the riser in the back? And five people in the back? If you're taller, please go to the back. One, two, three. One, two, three.
Next, Counselor Haat will present the Provider Appreciation Day.
I believe there are representatives from Adams and Jefferson County. Here, yes.
The more the merrier.
Would you like to introduce yourself?
I'm Patricia Bolton, and I'm the Executive Director of the Triad Early Childhood Council, which serves the counties of Jefferson, Clear Creek, and Gilpin.
And I'm Lisa Jansen Thompson, the Executive Director of the Early Childhood Partnership of Adams County.
Hi, my name is Sarah Talbert, and I am a proud owner of two centers in Adams County, bundles of babies.
Cute.
And then when we decided they had to go to school, if a bus came to pick them up in fourth grade that said "bundles of babies," they would be traumatized for life. So, we graduated to little bosses. And here's my director that's been with me for how many years?
Twenty-three. Twenty-three years.
My name is Angie Bartolo, and I run her centers.
Hello, my name's Nicole Gonzalez, and I also work with the Early Childhood Partnership of Adams County, and I serve as the Early Childhood Career Navigator.
Thank you all for being here tonight. So, whereas the Early Childhood Partnership of Adams County, the Triad Early Childhood Council, and other organizations nationwide are recognizing childcare providers on this day, and whereas the childcare system supports children's growth, development, and educational advancement, and creates a positive economic impact for families and communities, and whereas childcare providers are essential to the health of our communities by fostering welcoming spaces, supporting working families, and creating positive enriching environments where children can develop lifelong skills, and whereas Westminster recognizes that childcare has been and continues to be a lifeline for families, communities, and the economy, and is often under-resourced and undervalued, and whereas support for affordable, accessible, high-quality childcare represents a worthy commitment to help families work, support children's healthy development and learning, and keep our economy growing. Now therefore I, Nancy McNally, Mayor of the City of Westminster, on behalf of the entire City Council and staff, do hereby proclaim May 9, 2025, as Provider Appreciation Day, and call upon the people of Westminster to support childcare providers for their important work and to recognize how valuable they are to our communities. work and to recognize how valuable they are to our communities. Oh yeah, go for it.
All right, Mayor and Council members, on behalf of the Early Childhood Council and the Triad Early Childhood Council, we want to thank you for recognizing May 9th as Early Care and Education Provider Day. I also want to thank the City of Westminster for making childcare a top priority in your community with your recent agreement to develop a strategic plan. And specifically call out Councilmember Azadi, who is on the phone, as participating in a lot of community meetings to help resolve this issue that we are seeing. Early care and education professionals work in various settings, including licensed family childcare homes. During COVID, these professionals were recognized as essential workers to help ensure families could work and our communities could continue to access the services they need. We know that while COVID is behind us, this workforce remains essential for all of us to go about our daily lives, from going to the grocery store to getting gas. The businesses in this community rely on working parents, and therefore all of us rely on childcare being available and affordable. Further, we know that children who attend early care and education programs are engaged in activities and relationships with others that are building the foundation for their future success and their ability to be contributing members to our society. Most young children have all parents in the workforce, and yet between Adams County and Jefferson County, we only have the capacity to provide licensed childcare to 13% of our infants, 30% of our toddlers, and 86% of our preschoolers. Waitlist for infant care is anywhere from six to 18 months long. This lack of capacity leaves our families scrambling and sometimes making hard decisions about whether or not they can return to work. And we actually have a father who's told us that they're not even sure they're willing to have another child because they can't afford it. What may be contributing to this lack of capacity is that over the last four years, other industries such as fast food and retail have increased their wages by 5% to 9%, while the early care and education provider wages have only increased by 3%. And these wages are in the bottom 5% of all occupations. Additionally, many of these providers do not have access to benefits. However, these providers come to work with love and passion for the work that they do. Despite the challenges noted here, they recognize the importance of their job, on the development of children, and the economic stability of families and this community. They provide safe, nurturing, and educationally rich environments for our youngest citizens. And because of that, we want to recognize and appreciate them not only on May 9th, but every day they come to work.
So I was a licensed family childcare provider in the City of Westminster for nearly 20 years. So I know firsthand the struggles of running a childcare business, the struggles that families have trying to find childcare. So I commend the city for the recognition of this very, very important work. I won't say a whole lot, but I want, I was just remembering a saying, a little bumper sticker that we used to have on our car, and it still works today. And it was about childcare providers. And it said, because we care, America works.
Thank you. And I just want to thank everyone again for what they do. I am a mom of three children. They are all adults now, but I know the education they received and just being around other children was very beneficial for them when they were younger. So thank you so much.
The public comment portion is an opportunity for the public to speak with the City Council. Each participant will have up to three minutes. Public comment is not intended to be a back-and-forth discussion. The City Clerk has informed me that we have received two emails that have been attached to tonight's packet. And City Clerk, would you please call the first person? Yeah, the first person is Deborah Segaloff.
Good evening. Is this on? Okay. I'm Dr. Deborah Segaloff, a recently retired PhD biomedical research scientist. I'd like to address the topic of the Rocky Mountain Greenway, speaking for myself as well as for PSR Colorado, which is the Colorado Chapter of Physicians for Social Responsibility. We would like to thank you for voting in favor withdrawing from the IGA for the Greenway. It's a concern to all of us that in spite of your vote, circumstances permit the continued construction of the overpass over Indiana Street. In light of this, we also commend your recent vote not to improve the trail connecting Westminster's trails to the overpass. As I've mentioned to you previously, I worked for all my career with radioactive compounds. This was done following very strict federal and state safety guidelines, which included having to keep all the doors of my lab locked at all times. To extend this analogy to the Greenway, we urge you to please consider a physical barrier on Westminster's land, running a length long enough to discourage those from circumventing it, to prevent persons from traversing between Westminster's connecting trail and the overpass. Coming back to my lab, it was also necessary to have the International Radioactivity Warning Sign posted on all the doors to my laboratory. With or without a physical barrier, it's imperative that strong and clear signs warning people of the contamination of the refuge with plutonium be used. At the very least, signs with the International Radioactivity Symbol should be posted. A sign such as this one that also states danger and radioactivity would be even better. I would welcome the opportunity to have further discussions with you regarding potential signage. In conclusion, we thank you for recognizing the health dangers that the refuge and consequently the Greenway pose, and for taking actions to reflect that. Good evening.
Thank you. The next speaker is David Dalton. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. I have a couple issues. One is I live on Wasworth Boulevard, behind Target on Walnut Creek Complex. And I, I'm a little bit disappointed that it seems like Westminster likes to have, especially a lot of the businesses lighting on all night long. I can actually almost sit on my deck and read a book to the lights that are on. And there are studies that have been done that too much lighting actually helps promote crime, because it's easier for people to see what they're doing and to actually commit crimes easier. So I'd like to see more shielding of our outdoor lighting, if that can be enacted. And another thing which is kind of a pet peeve for me is I would like to see Westminster, any new multi-development facilities that are going up, that half or maybe more of the actual individual units have to be sold, not just, we're becoming a rental community, which is basically putting, forcing people to never be able to gain any equity to actually then buy a home or another property that they can then call themselves. And that's, the other thing I'd like to see is maybe the City of Westminster making a statement that the city endorses the United States Constitution and democracy and the rule of law. So thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Beth McBride. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor McNally and Council. My name is Beth McBride. I am the Volunteer Coordinator for the Westy Dog Park Guardians. And I'll put my glasses on here. In keeping with our stated mission to be a responsible community partner with the City of Westminster, I wanted to give you a brief update on one of our recent events. Many of you know Gary Bland, and I wish he were here. I'd like to shout out to him and thank him, because he gave us a call letting us know as a volunteer at Fish Food Pantry, that Fish is the pantry that only, is the only pantry in town or in the area that collects pet food. And we have so many seniors that rely on Fish, and of course they have pets at home, and many of the homeless too. Anyway, as you might recall, last November, just before Thanksgiving, we were able to raise about 3,000 pounds of pet food for Fish. But Gary's message was that Fish was out of food for cats and very low on dog food. We reached out to our community for help. We're very fortunate to have a number in our group. One is Jordan, I'm afraid I'm going to mispronounce her name, and her husband Tony, who owned Gee's Tacos, which is the first pamphlet you'll see in the beginning. They provided a collection point for this area, in addition to Sean Kramer, the son of Tammy Kramer, who will follow me in speaking. He's the manager of Mountain State Toyota and provided a second location drop-off. Within the past two to three weeks, we were able to raise over 900 pounds of dog food and pets, excuse me, pet food for Fish. And we are proud of the entire community of Westminster and our businesses in assisting us in the effort. And this is the first one. You've got to, you know, say that that is a sad-looking face, and it was done by Susan Herple. She does a wonderful job. And she took the, and then the pictures, the two pictures were two of the collections, but Gary Bland was the one that picked it up, took it to Fish, and distributed. So it's a community effort. It's just not us. So thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Tammy Kramer. Welcome.
Thank you. Hello, Mayor McNally and Councilmembers. My name's Tammy Kramer. I'm a member of the Westy Dog Park Guardians. Over the past several weeks at the dog park, we have distributed hundreds of flyers about the global cleanup. I think the turnout was pretty successful. When I was at the park this morning, it looked pretty well cleaned up. So that's a good thing. Five of us attended the volunteer barbecue luncheon on Saturday, which was quite nice. And our own Guardian professional photographer, Susan Herple, took hundreds and hundreds of photos to share with you, which are on thumb drives that I've already distributed, one to Eric and one to Jody, I believe. You got that? Okay, great. You can use those, however, at your own discretion. They're some great photos. Also, on May 17th, the Guardians will be hosting our Celebrate and Educate event from 8:00 to 11:00 a.m. We are officially celebrating our adoption of the Westminster Hills Dog Park. Mayor McNally has graciously agreed to say a few words on our behalf and cut the symbolic ribbon for us. We will have pup cups and treats for the doggies, and a complimentary professional photo session with our beautiful Colorado mountains as our backdrop for the pups and their people. Stanley Lake Rangers will be there to educate people about the dangers and prevention of rattlesnake bites. And Animal Control will also attend to explain the role that they play in protecting our animal population. So it should be a fun time for all, and we hope that you all can join us that morning. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Sherri Griffin. Welcome.
Hi, Mayor. Mayor Proton, City Council and Staff. My name is Sherri Griffin, and thank you for your time this evening. I have a couple of questions regarding the Greenway Trail and the bridge crossing at Indiana. At the April 21st study session, a map was used, that's Attachment A, to illustrate Western Who's and the Woman Creek property. In the legend, it states, "The Greenway Trail in Broomfield is to be abandoned." Is Broomfield acting in some way to abandon the Greenway Trail? The sign for the Greenway Trail of the Crossing from Westminster into Broomfield is Attachment B. And as stated in the April 14th City Manager's Report, construction on the bridge over Indiana Street is currently at a pause. Why is the bridge on a pause? In March a year ago, the schedule for the bridge installation was sometime in the spring, but then it was pushed to August because of the owl, then January of 2022, 2025, sorry. Then, before council had even voted, construction at the bridge site began at the underpass at Highway 128 on September 9th. Since the end of October, there has been no notable activity in the construction of the abutments. As of yesterday, both sides of Indiana still have giant gaping holes in the ground. The photos are in Attachment C. Has there been air monitoring or soil sampling that turned up something that stopped construction? And if so, when and what were the results? And finally, regarding the risks of recreation at Rocky Flats and signage, Boulder County taking the lead in the collaborative effort around consistent signage through the corridor sounds a lot like the agreed-upon language argument that Jefferson County and Fish and Wildlife have embraced. Which means no strong warnings and no warning symbols commonly used for radiation. Someone posted their own idea of what the signs should be at the parking lot to the Wildlife Refuge off of 128. They call it Rocky Flats Nuclear Waste Refuge. That's Attachment D. People need to know that there was no cleanup, no remediation done on the buffer zone. The government turned it into a wildlife refuge. How are they going to know this without signage that educates them? From your discussions, it seems that you are primarily in agreement about educating the public. In the movie Half-Life: Of Memory, America's Forgotten Atomic Bomb Factory, the question is asked, how are people supposed to know? We're not born with this knowledge. There are no signs out there. I've given you each a copy of the movie. Maybe there's still a DVD player to be found somewhere at the City Hall or the library, and a screening could be arranged by staff if you don't have one at home. It's also available to stream on Amazon Prime. Once again, thank you so much for everything you do and your continued attention to this matter of public health, and thank you again for your commitment to discourage the use of the land connecting to the bridge. Thanks.
Thank you. The next speaker is Parker Brown. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers and Staff. My name is Parker Brown, and I have the honor of serving as the Chair of the Westminster Chamber of Commerce. Today, I'm here to voice the Chamber Board's strong support for the Downtown Westminster Activation Plan. As business leaders and community stakeholders, we know that long-term success for a city depends not just on great infrastructure, but on creating places where people want to gather, connect, and invest their time and dollars. Activation is what turns a development into a destination. We see downtown activation as a smart strategic investment and tangible benefits. It strengthens small businesses. Our members depend on consistent foot traffic and vibrant public spaces to thrive. Activation directly translates into more customers, stronger sales, and greater staying power. It also enhances Westminster's regional competitiveness. Well, cities across the metro are vying for talent, investment, and tourism. A lively activated downtown sets Westminster apart and builds a cognitive energy that attracts families, businesses, and opportunities. It also builds civic pride. People want to live in places that feel alive. They want to be part of communities that offer experiences, connections, and cultures. Activation fosters a strong sense of belonging, and belonging fuels loyalty to our city. The Chamber Board sees this as a pivotal moment. We've built the structures, we've laid the groundwork, now is the time to invest in activation, to unlock the full potential of downtown Westminster. On behalf of the Westminster Chamber Board of Directors, I respectfully urge you to approve the downtown activation plan and help us move the vision to vibrancy. Also, just for the record, so the community knows, this is not taken away, as previously stated at a previous council meeting, from taxpayer funds. This is a metro district tax that only is paid for by the residents and businesses in downtown Westminster. Now is the time to invest in activation, to unlock the full potential of downtown Westminster. On behalf of the Westminster Chamber Board of Directors, I respectfully urge you to approve the downtown activation plan and help us move the vision to vibrancy. Also, just for the record, so the community knows, this is not taken away, as previously stated at a previous council meeting, from taxpayer funds. This is a metro district tax that only is paid for by the residents and businesses in downtown Westminster. Thank you for your time, leadership and continued commitment to Westminster's future.
Thank you. The next speaker is Jamie Chavez. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, council members and city staff. My name is Jamie Chavez. I serve as the President and CEO for the Westminster Chamber of Commerce. I'm here tonight to express my strong support for the Downtown Westminster Activation Plan and to encourage your vote in favor of advancing this crucial initiative. As the Chamber, our mission is to foster a thriving culture that connects and unifies our community partners. That mission cannot be fulfilled without an active inviting and economically vibrant downtown. We are at a pivotal moment. We've seen a tremendous investment go into the infrastructure and planning of downtown Westminster. But what we need now is people. We need energy and movement. We need a downtown that is not just built, but is alive. Here's why this vote matters for all of Westminster. First, activation drives economic growth. Local businesses don't just benefit from foot traffic, they depend on it. Events, entertainment and placemaking efforts are proven tools to attract residents and visitors alike. Activation is the missing link between brick and mortar investment and return on impact for our local economy. When our downtown thrives, so do jobs, services and small business dreams that come with it. Second, it aligns with your strategic priorities. This initiative aligns directly with the city's own goals, particularly those around economic vitality, quality of life and the regional competitiveness. You've laid the groundwork. Now's the time to bring it to life through people-first programming and experiences. Third, our members are asking for this. As a Chamber, we represent over 400 businesses. Over 100 have joined in the last year. A common theme that we hear from our members is that they want more community engagement, more foot traffic and more reasons for people to stay in Westminster and shop local. And Activated Downtown helps our existing members and also helps us retain and attract new ones. Number four, activation builds community belonging. This isn't just about business, it's about connection. It's about creating a place where families feel welcome, where people gather for concerts, festivals, markets and moments of joy. My daughters are nearly five and seven and I really want them to grow up in this city loving this place and having so many fond memories of being here in Westminster and the experiences that they've had here. Number five, it's a smart investment. This isn't a frivolous expense. It's an intentional strategy with a high potential for return. Studies from communities across the country show that investing in downtown activation pays dividends in tax revenue, tourism, business openings and civic pride. We are not reinventing the wheel. We are unlocking the value of what's already been built. Council, you have the opportunity not just to approve a plan, but to spark a movement. As the Chamber, we're ready to stand to be a collaborative partner in this work. We will promote events, rally our business community and ensure that downtown activation becomes a long-term, community-driven success. So, I encourage you to give our residents and businesses the vibrant, connected and energized downtown that they've been promised and that they truly deserve. Thank you so much for your time and your continued leadership.
Thank you. The next speaker is Matt Simmons. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, council members and staff. I don't know how I'm going to be able to compete with that, so I'm just going to compliment it, I hope. My name is Matt Simmons. I'm a financial advisor with Edward Jones and I'm also proud to be the head ambassador to the Downtown Westminster Business Association, also known as the DWBA. Tonight, I'm not speaking just as someone who works downtown, but as someone who is invested in downtown in every sense of the word. I'm here to voice a strong support of the Downtown Activation Plan. With this vote tonight, it means something bigger than the lights and programming that we've seen. It's about building momentum. It's about giving those of us who took a chance on this district support, that we need to see it truly survive. I've been in downtown Westminster long enough to know what's working and what's missing. We have beautiful buildings. We have great concepts. We have a vision. Now we need people. We need more reasons for them to come here, more reasons for them to stay. Why this matters for us to be doing business downtown? One, we need foot traffic. As a financial advisor, I know that foot traffic is the lifeblood of small businesses. Right now, it's hit or miss. We've seen potential during the events, the markets and summer programming. When the plaza is active, my neighbors, the restaurants and service businesses see results. But it can't just be occasional. It has to be consistent. Two, we choose, we chose downtown for a reason. We chose downtown because we believed in the vision. We believed in the idea of a vibrant core, a place where businesses could grow, where people could work, play and live in one connected community. But without activation, that promise feels unfinished. We've built the foundation. This plan is what brings it to life. Three, we need the businesses that we have. I've talked to fellow business owners and many of them are feeling the pressure. Without more traffic and engagement, it's hard to sustain momentum. The Activation Plan gives us a fighting chance, not just to survive, but to succeed. Four, it's about pride and place. We want people to be proud of our downtown. To come here is not just for errands, but for experiences, for energy, for connection. That only happens when the space is active with music and arts and programming. And I've got two seconds. So, on behalf of the DWBA, my fellow downtown business owners, I respectfully urge you, plan to plan and vote yes. We are here, we are ready and we are counting on you.
Your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Patricia Bolton. Patricia Bolton. The next speaker is Craig Russell. Welcome.
Thank you very much. I wanted to ask a question, to be honest with you, because I've been having some issues about who's really in charge. I thought City Council was in charge, but it seems like city staff might be in charge of a lot of things. I've been on the Advisory Committee for the Systematic Inspection Rental Program that we have here in the city of Westminster. And I didn't know that you guys had decided to just cancel that. But it had been canceled. It started, I believe by your direction, last year in June. And we had several meetings once a month, third Thursday of the month for quite a while until about November. And then they got postponed. We had a change in staff, apparently. And then we got an email here on February 18th from Samantha Everett that we've been postponed indefinitely. And I didn't know that staff could just do that. So, I did try and reach out to staff. I called on March 14th of this year to the City Manager's Office and talked to a very lovely lady, a nice gal. And she said she would look into it and, you know, take a little bit of time, maybe a week or so. Well, week, seven days, score's 20. So is indefinitely, apparently, because they've never gotten back to me. So, I'm just kind of wondering, is anyone actually going to get back to me on this? And when's the Advisory Committee going to continue and have that? Because otherwise, I just get the feeling that the City Council and city staff doesn't need any advice. They must know it all. And I hate to believe that would be possible. So, I'm hoping that we'll get that back on track and get to it so we can actually give advice. There's been about 20 people on this Advisory Board working diligently and spending their time and their efforts to come with something that's a little more collaborative and a little more equal for the citizens of the city of Westminster, the tenants that live here, the landlords, which are the small, the numerous amount of small businesses that are here in Westminster running them. And we'd like to be treated equally and fairly and within the Constitution. So, I appreciate getting answer on this.
Thank you. The next speaker is Giselle Hersfeld. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Westminster City Council members, and thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Giselle Hersfeld and I'm here today on behalf of the Rocky Mountain Peace and Justice Center and also on behalf of the young people who grew up along the Colorado Front Range in the shadow of a nuclear weapons plant we were never informed existed. I'm here first and foremost to thank you for having the courage and strength to stand up against a paradigm of injustice. Your recent vote to reaffirm your commitment to not develop the portion of the Rocky Mountain Greenway on Westminster land is an important measure to demonstrate that the Rocky Mountain Greenway was not built on public consensus. Your vote to withdraw from the Greenway project has since had a resounding impact by empowering other local governments to vote to oppose public recreation at Rocky Flats. Since your vote last September, two other governments, Lyons and Superior, have passed resolutions opposing the Greenway Trail. I hope you know how much your leadership is seen and appreciated. To be frank, there is so much bad news coming in day after day of elected leaders nationwide betraying the best interests of their constituencies and it is easy to fall into hopelessness and despair. But you have given me hope that there are still good leaders who care about people's safety, health and wellbeing. So, just thank you for being awesome. While refusing to develop the Rocky Mountain Greenway on Westminster land is a huge act in itself, you also have the power to go even further by informing the community of the risks of recreating on the Rocky Mountain Greenway Trail through informative signage and air monitoring. Informative signage could include the internationally recognized radioactive symbol, which is a proposal being discussed in Boulder County, as well as a link to the Rocky Flats Right to Know website and the language from former State Representative Wes McKinley's legislation, which quote, "requires the posting of signs at entrances to the Rocky Flats National Wildlife Refuge containing specified information about the presence of and risked posed by plutonium and other toxic substances that were used in the production of nuclear weapons at the site." Although the legislation didn't pass, I think it contains a lot of really important language to reference. Air monitoring would also be a powerful way to demonstrate the risks of airborne plutonium contamination on and near the Rocky Flats site to increase public transparency on the issue. I would point to independent experts such as Dr. Michael Ketterer to help inform this effort. However you decide to proceed, I want you to know that the people have your back. Thank you for hearing me today.
Thank you. The next speaker is Chris Allred.
Thank you. Good evening, Council. Hi, my name is Chris Allred, commenting for Rocky Mountain Peace and Justice Center. I would like to say thank you for reaffirming your vote not to build the Rocky Mountain Greenway. Every day, I'm more impressed by the leadership on this council. It was so encouraging to see the council maintain your courageous stand last Monday. Also, thank you to the Westminster Dog Park Guardians for continuing to carefully study this issue and advocate on behalf of public health. This is how it looks when a council and its citizens are empowered to act together to protect the community. Your vote to withdraw from the Rocky Mountain Greenway was a principled and well-researched decision. It has empowered other communities to stand up for their public health. In February, the Town of Superior reaffirmed their unanimous decision to oppose the Rocky Mountain Greenway. In March, the Town of Lyons voted six to one to pass a resolution opposing the Rocky Mountain Greenway. Now, the communities directly impacted adjacent to Rocky Flats, both on the north side, Superior and Lyons, and on the east side, Westminster and Broomfield, all are on record opposing this project. These precedents continue to prove that this was never a project being promoted by the people. The majority oppose it. The only reason the project has made it this far was by the top-down design of manufactured consent and regulatory capture. Thank you for your act of resistance against this structural injustice. We're with you. We must keep using our voices and organizing. This is a fundamental of democracy. It's our First Amendment right. We need extraordinary solidarity between community groups and local governments to educate people about the nuclear weapons complex and how it impacts our communities. Let's meet this moment to establish signage that warns people and their families about the contamination at Rocky Flats. Three concepts that were mentioned by Giselle and have been raised in the community a lot lately are the internationally recognized radioactive symbol. This transcends language barriers. We need to be acknowledging accessibility for all languages, all people to be able to be warned. A link to the Rocky Flats Right to Know website. Boulder County has talked about including a QR code along with the internationally recognized radioactive symbol. And then Wes McKinley signage language. And another issue is air monitoring. I'd encourage you to work with Dr. Ketterer and I'll be here for support. We're glad to correspond and meet this moment together. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Tom Lambo.
Welcome. Hey, thank you very much. It's good to be back here in front of everybody. I'm Tom Lambo and I'm here to lift up Westminster in prayer, so please join me in prayer. Heavenly Father, in Jesus' name, we invite you here to the city of Westminster to be our God and to lead us in all that we do. This is your city and you are welcome here at all times. We are living in incredible times. Evil is all around us, but we shouldn't fear because you are greater than any spirit that would come against us. Our enemy has caused a lot of damage, but you can reverse everything that has been done to us. There's nothing that you cannot accomplish. We lift our government up to you because they need to get it right. The decisions they make will affect our lives. It states in Deuteronomy 429, "But from there you will seek the Lord your God and you will find him if you search for him with all your heart and all your soul." Send your spirit to guide the hearts of those who have placed in leadership roles. Encourage them to seek you when they make decisions. By seeking you and gaining your knowledge and blessing, their decisions will bring harmony to everyone's lives. Father, the wisdom in your council is beyond measure and your patience for us is immense. We are nothing without you. Search us and find that our intentions are to do what is right, even though we fall short of this. Your word says in Proverbs 24:16, "If an honest person falls down seven times, he will still stand up again; but when trouble comes to a wicked person, that is the end of him." You give us hope in this verse. We will sin and fall from your perfect will, but your goodness shines through. As we repent and receive your forgiveness, we are brought back to the perfect communion with you. Our hope is in you. Help us daily seek you through all our challenges. You are our God and we are your people. In Jesus' precious name, we pray. Amen. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. The next speaker is Jim Fenimore.
Welcome. Good evening, Mayor, council, staff. I'm not sure what the chamber does. I've been by there five times, tried to see them. There's a sign over there that's like this on the door. And then there's signs above it, signs below it. There's no hours. You're driving by, you don't even know it's there. And then, so, I don't know where they're at. And then they're talking about trying to promote the area over there. How are you going to promote it if you're not there? Going to give $300,000 to take and promote an eight-block area from 88th to 92nd, 36th to Harlan Street? Last time I heard from any council or chamber, they promote the whole city, not just four square blocks. That doesn't sound right to me. So, big concern. It seems like red flags. And then, next thing is, is on the water conservation, I've seen where the city's giving back to the community to help them make the city more water-wise. I think on the development, we don't have a lot of large development left in Westminster. Most of it's going to be infill. But as that infill keeps going forth, we need to really... we need to really upfront with these developers and the develop, with the planning is get plants and things in there from the get-go, not afterwards. I mean, I sat in a meeting a couple of weeks ago to where the city's giving $70,000 out to communities to lower their water consumption. That should have been done in the get-go. Why do it later? Why should the city have to spend money later on to make things water-wise when it should have been done in the beginning? We could take that $70,000 and, I don't know, buy some, something for their police department, something for the fire department. $70,000 goes a long ways to help, so. At any rate, just suggestions. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Karen Calaviti.
Welcome. Hi. I was sitting in the garden before coming in. The garden that has the sculptures and the trees here at the city hall. And three of them are marked with blue, which I'm guessing means there's going to be a, you know, a saw coming to them. And this is a concern of mine that we're bringing in little trees for people to plant, and that's great. At the same time, there have been a lot of big trees felled within the city. And when I see the markings right here at the city hall for trees that I know are going to be brought down, it makes me angry. Every tree supports enough oxygen for four people, and especially big trees. Little trees don't have that same effect, so I wanted to bring that up. But the bigger item on my mind is the water treatment plant, which has been a concern. It does not meet environmental standards. It's certainly way out of, it's way too expensive. And even in Denver now, Denver Water is being stopped by a judge from building the Gross Dam, the Gross Reservoir in Boulder. And I think before we get to the point where Gross Dam is with Denver Water, we need to take a much better look at our own water treatment plans, which are already far along and should never have gotten that far along. But before anything is constructed, I think we need to take a much better look at what we need and what will work in the city as far as a water treatment plan.
Thank you. The next speaker is John Palmer. Welcome.
Good evening. We'll get to the handout here in a minute. This all evolves around the inclusivity board meeting that was April 9th. Within a day or two after that meeting, I called and requested the recording of that meeting. Lo and behold, I heard nothing from anyone regarding my ability to get that. So on the 16th, I ended up speaking with City Manager's Office about said recording. Well, come to find out, they lost it. Now, how you lose a recording of a meeting, that's important. That's part of the Open Records Act. I was then told through a message from the City Clerk's Office, that's the first page, I was originally told that the city's not required to record meetings. It was done as a courtesy to the citizens. I knew that not to be true. At that point, I asked where in the code is that stated? I was told it's in the city code. I said, "I can't find it. Can someone direct me?" That's where the first letter came from City Manager's Office. Nowhere in there does it say anything about, "We get to do it at our discretion." Says the meetings are either need to be recorded or have a stenographer there for that purpose. Second page you'll see is actually the full code of Section C, but the point is, why was I told that we don't have to record meetings? This brings up a whole nother point. How many other meetings? Well, let me back up. Because after I was told they didn't have that meeting, I asked for the one from February. Well, lo and behold, it's gone too. We lost it. So that's at least two from the inclusivity board that we've lost. I have no record of. I realize we have minutes, but minutes are not verbatim as to what happened. That makes me wonder how many other boards and commissions is this happening on? That we're not getting recordings or transcribed minutes, or not minutes, but stenographer with actual verbiage from the meeting? I think we can do a whole lot better. It's all right here in code. It's black and white. There's no gray to it. There's no, we can record when and when we don't want to. It's a courtesy. That's not what code says. You can read and see that. It's very irritating to be quoted code that's not there when I know it to be not there. Like I said, very disappointed. I think we can do a whole lot better. And again, how many other boards and commission meetings have not been recorded or just gone into thin air? Now, I'll take it a step further. I called City Manager's Office numerous times that same week to ask Jody about this. It's been two weeks I have not heard peep one from Jody or his staff. Very disturbing, Jody.
Your time is up. Thank you. I'm going to call Patricia Bolton one more time. That's, that was our final speaker. Thank you. That brings us to City Manager. Do you have a report for us?
I do, Mayor. Thank you very much. If I could have the next slide, please. I think that's coming. One slide I do not have is a report out on this weekend. We did have our police department work with the DEA and having pharmaceuticals returned and dropped off at our Public Safety Center. And the chief advises me unofficially at this point, and I'll have a slide next week, that we received 281 pounds from our community and so that those pharmaceuticals will be collected and destroyed appropriately. Also, last week was the wrap-up of Pothole Palooza. And from April 14th to April 17th, the Public Works and Utilities crews with our Public Works Utilities Department filled 2,201 potholes using almost 40 tons of material. So that was in response to a lot of reports from our community. Over 100 pothole submissions we responded to from our residents. And that resulted in 81 new individuals signing up for Westminster's new Access Westminster app. And I'd encourage anybody to sign up for that who hasn't got that. That's very helpful. And I also want to report that we received great coverage and support from the all-major local TV news outlets who were there every day for each day of Pothole Palooza. Next slide, please. By way of city update, our municipal courthouse community advisory team has been providing input now to the new courthouse design for over a year. The team met for the final time last week, ensuring that the public's perspectives and preferences remain critical and central to the project design, so their input continues and is very, very helpful. Community members who have not been involved in that advisory team are encouraged to learn about the final design and upcoming construction at an open house that's scheduled on May 27th, and that will run from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the city's Swim and Fitness Center. The community is also going to be invited to the groundbreaking celebration on June 11th from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the current municipal courthouse on Turnpike Drive. And more information is available on the city website, which is westminsterco.gov/850/municipal-courthouse-project. Next slide, please. I also want to provide this update. The Leave No Trace Spring Photo Contest is now underway. And any member of the Westminster community can submit their best spring photos of Westminster, whether it's flowers, landscapes, or moments of local life in the city. And anyone who does so can win an exciting prize in our Leave No Trace Spring Photo Contest. I would like to note that last year's winning photos are proudly on display in the City Manager's Office. And they're widely available. They're really outstanding photographs from our community. This contest is open to everyone, and the deadline for submissions this year is Monday, May 5th, so that's coming right up. You can learn more at westd.news/springphotocontest. Next slide, please. I also want to provide this update. Our City Sustainability Center is under, or involved in, sorry, a promotion of our spring cleaning efforts, and that celebrates one year of operation for that sustainability center. That's on West 91st, just at Harlan Street. Westminster residents can take advantage of $30 off e-waste or electronic waste and mattress drop-off now from May 1st to May 31st. So mattress recycling is not very common. It's very difficult. Our Sustainability Center is now accepting mattresses. Those go to a facility where they're disassembled and recycled. So if you have a mattress, please take advantage of this service. Residents can schedule a drop-off by calling Sustainability Recycling at 303-593-0808. Next slide, please. This is an important update. Last Monday, I announced that Eric Otzelberger has been selected as the City of Westminster's Park, Recreation, and Libraries Director. I want to highlight that. Eric has been serving in an acting capacity for us as director. And on Monday, following a strong internal recruitment process, I was able to appoint Eric as our permanent director. Eric has 25 years of local government experience, 17 of those with the City of Westminster. His titles in his career have included Acting Parks, Recreation, and Libraries Director most recently. He also has served significantly for us as a leader of our Operations and Community Preservation Division. That's in our Community Services Department. He was also, prior to that position with us, Deputy County Manager for Eagle County. He was also with us before then. We call Eric our boomerang leader. He was Assistant to the City Manager here, Senior Management Analyst, Management Analyst, and started with us as Management Intern. This is interesting. If you may not know this about Eric, he started his career in journalism, working five years in Minneapolis, Minnesota. He holds a Master of Public Administration and a Bachelor of Science in Journalism and Mass Communication. So Eric, congratulations, and thank you very much for accepting this permanent position as one of our key leaders in Westminster. Next slide, please. I have two slides on tonight's agenda. We have received and presented our three proclamations to our community. Up in my packet tonight are two information-only items, some referenced by speakers tonight. Water Bill Assistance Programs Updates is in your packet, and our Water Conservation and Efficiency Programs Update, also in packet. Tonight, we have five items on consent agenda, including two second readings. One of those items has been removed, the fifth item, from consent, and that will be voted on separately tonight. Under Old Business, we have a second reading of Counselor's Bill Number 7. And that's a Comprehensive Plan Amendment and Consideration of a Preliminary Development Plan Amendment for Uplands Filing 3, Block 1, Tract A, and Block 3. Next slide, please. We also have this evening Westminster Economic Development Authority meeting, and that will happen after this meeting. Under New Business, it's the Authorization to Execute an Agreement with the Westminster Chamber of Commerce for Downtown Westminster Activation. And we did have speakers present on that this evening. And then we will have a post-meeting study session, and that will be a presentation of the Rocky Mountain Metropolitan Airport Taxiway Construction and Related Improvement Projects and solicitation of City Council comments for associated referral from Jefferson County. So staff will have comments for City Council in terms of this proposal at the airport, and then council will provide direction on that. Next slide, please. This week, some highlights. As mentioned a little bit earlier, Westminster Arts Week is underway. That started April, sorry, that starts April 26th and goes through Saturday, May 3rd. This Wednesday, April 30th, is an Environmental Advisory Board meeting that starts at 6:30 at City Hall. It's also a hybrid meeting. Can be, participate in that through Teams. And then on Saturday, May 3rd, City Council will be having a special study session. This is open to the public, of course. That includes City Council and Department Directors, and that is a 2026 Budget Workshop. And that will start at 9 o'clock right here at City Hall and run through till 3:00 p.m. Next slide, please. At our next meeting, and that's a study session on Monday, May 5th, that starts at 6:30 in the City Council Boardroom, we will have an information-only item on Wattenberg Reservoir Complex Project. That's an update. We will have two presentations. One will be to review boards and commissions' term limits, impacts, and options. And second will be to go through with City Council and get input and feedback on City Council onboarding. So as we prepare for the election in November, we want to get ideas and suggestions and requests from you as to how to make that the best onboarding we've had in a number of years. Then we will follow with an executive session on discussing strategy and progress on negotiating an intergovernmental agreement between the city and Highland Hills Parks and Recreation District. Finally, also that evening will be a Westminster Economic Development Authority Study Session, and that will be to discuss the possible purchase and subsequent lease of real property interest located in downtown Westminster. Next slide, please. You can contact the City Manager's Office at 303-658-2003. Reach me directly at, by email at jandrews@westminsterco.gov. I do have staff who, when I'm not able to take those calls, will return those phone calls and talk to the individual who's seeking information. It may not be me personally, but I assure you that staff do respond. We have four media sites, Facebook, Instagram, X, and Nextdoor. And of course, our very own website, which we've recently overhauled. So as you work through that website, if you find anything that needs improvement, please let us know. It is a work in progress. Counselor Ireland found something tonight based on a resident inquiry, and that was very helpful. We'll get that fixed. So anything of that nature, please let us know. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thanks. And you always say, "Our website's new, so we need eyes and ears looking at it," and letting us know is perfect. Any questions just for the City Manager and his report? I know you started to answer a person that had testified. Do you want to finish your comments of whether the staff, you said staff, answered the person?
Yes, Mayor, I tried to comment just then. Yes, sometimes we do receive multiple inquiries from members of our community, and I do make sure that staff do respond to those individuals. Sometimes it does come in a wave, and we get more than I'm able to respond to personally. But I do assure people that I do, I'm aware of those phone calls, and I do make sure that our staff do respond to those questions. We sometimes can't provide an immediate resolution to a concern, but we will always look into that concern and make sure that it's being addressed.
And as I read Conduct of Meetings, it says, "A border commission that conducts a public hearing." That is not the same as just having their inclusivity board meeting. They would have to have had a public hearing about something, correct? And we do have some boards that do that. That is correct. The advisory boards, all the boards, need to take minutes or record them, but they don't have to do both. And if there's a public hearing, it must be recorded or a stenograph transcript must be available. Right. Thanks. Any other questions?
Mayor.
Yes.
I was hoping that, and you don't have to do it tonight, but if we could get a follow-up about the advisory committee in terms of the rental program, that would be awesome. I know that was something that we were interested in, so I'm curious where that's at and some follow-up on that. The other thing that I would just mention for the benefit of the public to what the mayor was just talking about, I've been the liaison to the inclusivity board as first seat for about four years, which I am passing the torch to Counselor Haath. She is passionate about the work that they do, and so I'm glad that she's stepping into the first role with that. After four years of that, I think it's sometimes nice for us to switch up and do- After four years of that, I think it's sometimes nice for us to switch up and do different roles. But I will say that up until COVID, a lot of those meetings weren't recorded. And we started recording them as part of COVID so that people could even see, or actually even participate as boards. And that was very well received by the public. And so we started broadcasting most of those wherever we could make it possible.
Anyone else? The only other thing just to highlight for May 17th, since it's a crazy day, and we're going to be going from one thing to another for the dog park, there's going to be a lot of people, and there's little parking. So I just raised that issue. Because they know I'm coming to head straight to the Armed Services Garden. So if I have to walk three or four blocks, I will not be making all of my commitments. So I just know it's going to be a big thing, and we don't need that to be a burden on the community. So I don't know what we're going to do, but we need to think about that ahead of time. Okay, that brings us to Council Comments. Counselor Ireland?
Thank you for all the residents that came out and spoke. I've heard your concerns. I thank those that have talked about the Greenway Trail. Of course, the Guardians know that I support their efforts, and getting all that dog food and cat food is great, especially for those seniors that have to choose whether they eat or their dog eats, basically, probably, or their cat. Also, David Dalton, thank you for coming out. And he's probably not here anymore, but telling us about the lighting problem at Walnut Creek Complex. We wouldn't, that's the first I've heard of that, and so I don't know if there's others out there that are concerned about that. Hopefully, staff can look at that. I know that in my own area, up at By the Orchard, they made sure the lighting was low when they built the target there, and hopefully, we can do the same for those citizens. I also feel his concern about all these apartments we're building and not ownership. I think people take more pride in what they have, when they own it. And so I'm hoping that that can be more of what we're focused on, is ownership instead of rentals. I know that there was a report on the news that a whole metro area has too many apartments and too many rentals, and we're headed for a cliff. And it's not what people want. They want to own and be able to build equity like former generations. So that's what I want for the young people, too. So I appreciate him coming out and speaking on that. And I guess we've had some clearing up of who was talked about. The gentleman that talked about a committee or advisory that was no longer going. What is that? Does anyone know?
Thank you, Counselor Ireland. That was also raised by Counselor Demott.
Okay, thank you.
That was the committee that was comprised of landlords, and it was providing input into the city's rental housing inspection program. I just want to assure the community, the rental housing inspection program is going strong. We're restructuring our staffing, using internal resources, no additional staffing to provide more inspectors for that program. Part of that overhaul has been to reexamine our advisory committee structure to include also tenants. And so the speaker is correct that the landlord advisory committee has been temporarily set down while we look at a revised committee structure that's more inclusive of all community members in this program. And we'll have more to provide on that as the program, as the restored program really comes alive.
Okay, thank you. And thank you for the Chamber of Commerce coming out, speaking how they feel about the new downtown and revitalizing it, or not just revitalizing, getting it vitalized. I don't know what the word, I'm not using the right, correct word, but here I am. You know what I mean. And John Palmer, thank you for making us aware of the code for these meetings that we're in. I know I didn't even get a link to the one that I was supposed to be in this week, so that's a concern for me. And hopefully, I can get the minutes from that meeting, since I didn't even get the link. Anyway, thank you so much for everyone that commented and let us know how they're feeling and what we should be focused on. Thank you.
Counselor Carmelia?
Thank you so much. You never know when it's going to be a heavy comment night, which I love. We're really lucky in Westminster to have such an engaged community. So thank you. Thank you all for being here. I, too, will try to address the many comments and concerns that we heard. Thank you, Counselor Ireland, for bringing up the lighting. That is something that really hasn't been on my radar when we talk about new developments, and it should be. So I appreciate that resident bringing that to my attention, because I think a lot of us on here are concerned with all sources of pollution, including noise and lighting. So I'll keep a lookout in the future. I just want to say thank you to the Guardians for being here. I just think that you have proved time and again how impressive and incredible it is when a truly engaged community comes together. You make a difference, and you've done it not once, not twice. I mean, you've done it repeatedly. It's just amazing that in a weekend or in a week, you know, you can raise 900 pounds of food. It's just really impressive. So thank you for all your work, and thank you for continuing to involve us. And I think that our whole city is better off for you being here. So we're really lucky to have you. I want to mention to the folks that were talking about the Greenway Trail, thank you for providing the half-life of memory. I'm really grateful that we have folks that continue to speak on the Rocky Flats issue, because awareness has, up till now, been really, really low. And I did see the very first public introduction of this movie a few months back. And I'm really grateful to see that it's now available. You said Amazon Prime, I didn't realize that. It's available for the whole world to see, which is really important. And this is something that, as we know, exists right here in our backyard. And so I think that we have a public duty, not just, I mean, absolutely for the folks here in this city, living in this city, but really a public duty to set precedent for cities all over the U.S. when it comes to superfund sites, on how we conduct ourselves and how we decide to implement planning. And when it's time to push back against a plan that doesn't make sense, to make sure that we do so. Because when we set precedent, it really provides an example for other leaders and other civic, civically engaged residents to follow. So they know what to do, how to do it, where to go. And I think that the folks that have shown up time again to our city town hall here have really shown and led the way for cities all over the U.S. on how they can make an impact and make a difference. So thank you for being here. When it comes to the signage, I do want to reassure folks that, you know, I think that we all care very much about what that signage will look like. And we haven't seen a draft yet, and so that is coming. We know it's coming. And so once we see drafts, then we can make sure that it has the impact that we want it to have. So thank you for all your suggestions there. I will pause and ask our city manager, I guess, do we have some sort of estimate about when we will see what that signage will look like? And do we have a team working on that?
Thank you for the question, Counselor. We do have staff working on that, and we will have something back shortly that we can engage with City Council. I do plan on presenting at the next meeting an update on the project. It will include probably a process and a timeline around the signage. No mock-ups yet, but we do listen to our speakers, and the input tonight has been invaluable. And we will, we also may take up, one of our speakers did offer to look at the signage with us, some drafts, and we may take that person up on that offer.
That's amazing. Thank you so much, and thank you for always taking better notes than we can when we're up here. So. And then I want to say thank you for the folks from the chamber for being here. I realize I should hold most of my remarks for our Weeda discussion, but it's going to be a really late night. So I'm just going to say really quickly here that I emphatically agree with the statements that were made. I am really excited to support this effort. I do believe that placemaking creates civic pride, like as was said earlier tonight. And I genuinely believe that activating the space will encourage residents to invite not just local shopping, but invite tourism. And I really believe that this investment strategically, what we're doing is a strategic investment that will expand and expound on itself tenfold, right? It will invest in our city, and it will bring more money in towards us, towards the businesses there. And I think to what was also said earlier, it's doing everything we wanted it to do. It's all of our goals, which sometimes the city can't take on all by itself. And so that's why we partner, and that's why partnership and collaboration are so important, is that we partner strategically with the folks who are able to take on this burden for us and make our dollars go further and really make them reach a wider audience than I think we could have been able to by ourselves. I would have followed up with the advisory board, but we've already answered that question. So thank you so much. And if there's anyone I did miss, I know that our staff will get back to you, so thank you. And just thanks for everyone for coming out. Your concern means a lot to us.
Counselor Demott?
Thank you, Mayor. Try to be quick. Couple, couple things. One, I wanted to share that I did go to the final cap meeting of the, for the courthouse. I stopped by at least for the presentation, listened to what they were, what was shared. It was mostly around the construction project and how that's going to impact the community. There was a lot of really good feedback that I know staff will be bringing back around how we notify people, the different phases, and how it might impact them and their ability to move. And one thing that we also talked about there was making sure that we work with the PD and the folks that summon folks to court, so that they know when they go down there for court that they're not surprised, because certainly we don't want people being late to court or driving erratically as they try to answer for driving erratically. So there's a lot of good feedback from that. And, you know, I look forward to the presentation once it comes back to Council. But I also, on behalf of this whole body, thanked the members that were there that have given all their time and efforts to make sure that that process goes well. So the last thing I wanted to do, so since I've been on Council, there's been a couple times. National Day of Prayer is Thursday. I will be participating at the Crossing Church that is on 104th and King, just a little bit west of Federal. I hope you join us there. It will start at 7 o'clock. It actually starts a little bit before that, they have breakfast. This is a nationally recognized holiday, and I'm going to read one of the proclamations from former President Biden, because that's the one I was able to pull up. Last year, I did one from President Barack Obama. In prior years, we've done it as a council. Unfortunately, this year, we couldn't garner four votes in order to do a proclamation to celebrate those folks in their faith. This is traditionally mostly Judeo-Christians that celebrate National Day of Prayer, but all people are welcome to come and celebrate that. And as one of the cornerstones, freedom of speech of this country, I would be remiss to not read this into the record, because I think it's very important for folks like myself who do practice this religion, both to practice our own, but also to be able to do that so other folks can do the same thing. So I am going to read 2024's into record, and then we can move on with our meeting. "On this day, National Day of Prayer, we recognize that the power of prayer to strengthen our spirits, draw together, and create hope for a better tomorrow. The right practice of our faith freely and openly is enshrined in the Constitution and remains at the core of our American spirit. For centuries, Americans of every religion and background have come together to lift up one another in our nation in prayer. Throughout America's history, faith and prayer have helped fuel some of the greatest moral missions of our time. From the abolition of slavery to the fight for voting rights and the civil rights movement, many of our nation's greatest leaders have been motivated by faith to push all of us forward for a more perfect union and to bend the arc of the moral universe towards justice. Prayer is deeply personal for the First Lady and me. So across the nation, prayer has helped us find solace during tough times, stay grounded in good ones. Prayer has helped bravest among us, including our nation's service members and caregivers, survivors and families summon the courage to make the great sacrifices of our democracy. It has guided the hands of medical professionals who healed our loved ones and steeled the nerves of our first responders, who put everything on the line to keep the rest of us safe. We will never know the full impact of prayer on our nation or the world, but we remain confident that it makes a profound difference in each and every day. Scripture tells us to rejoice in hope, be patient in tribulation, and be constant in prayer. This year, my prayer for our nation is that we keep the faith that our best days are ahead of us, and we continue to believe in honesty, decency, dignity, and respect. May we see each other not as enemies, but fellow human beings, each made in the image of God and each precious in His sight. May we leave no one behind, give everyone a fair shot, and give hate no safe harbor. May we remember that nothing is beyond our capacity if we act together." Congress, the Congress Public Law 100-307, as amended, has called on the President to issue each year a proclamation designated the first Thursday in May as National Day of Prayer. Now, therefore, I, Joseph R. Biden Jr., President of the United States, by virtue of the authority vested in me by the Constitution and the laws of the United States, do hereby proclaim May 2nd, 2024, as National Day of Prayer. I call upon the citizens of our nation to give thanks in accordance with their own faith and conscious for many freedoms and blessings. And I invite all people of faith to join me in asking God to continue guidance, mercy, and protection. And witness wherefore, I here to set hand this first day in May in the year of our Lord 2024 and Independence of the United States of America 248. Joseph R. Biden Jr., which, again, that was last year. So I appreciate your time tonight and you participating, and that's all my comments, Mayor.
Counselor Izadi, I can't see you, so do you have anything? Thank you. Counselor Ireland?
I just want to thank Counselor Demott for that proclamation. I did support a proclamation for National Day of Prayer. I'd be ungrateful to God if I didn't thank Him for all that He has given me, and especially for this nation and the freedoms that we take for granted sometimes. But if you go to other parts of the world, you know that this nation has been blessed beyond measure. I appreciate that, Dave.
I just want to finish with some comments made last week and the week before by council members around Greenway Trail, and apologize as a leader of this group to City Manager Jody Andrews, because words deceitful, bait and switch, doobed, were all used or heard out of people's mouths. As soon as you heard any member, from the time that we've been discussing everything, and especially after the March meetings and what was going to happen, you stopped immediately, went immediately to sources and said, "Where are we with this project? Can it be paused?" You paused it, you clarified, you talked with all of your counselors that had questions. You did it in the proper manner. And I just want the community to know, sometimes when you hear things from here and nobody ever says anything, does not mean that's the way it was. And I just want to publicly, since those words were used publicly, to say, "I apologize on behalf of the City Council, and thank you for what you do for us." That brings us to the Consent Agenda, and they are reversed in the order that they should be. So the second one needs to go first. So is there a motion to approve the Consent Agenda, Items 8A through D? Counselor Demott?
Thank you, Mayor. It was moved to approve Consent Agenda, Items 8A through 8D.
Mayor Protem?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the Consent Agenda, Items 8A through D. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Carmelia?
Yes.
Counselor Demott?
Yes.
Counselor Izadi? Counselor Hott?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Normella?
Yes.
And Counselor Ireland?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 7-0 vote.
Item 8E was removed, and City Manager, do we have anything, or we need to see if there's any questions?
Staff is here to answer any questions that Council may have.
Counselor Ireland, you removed it. Do you have any questions?
I do have a few questions. So in the past, I think we leased this equipment. Now we're going to buy the equipment. Is that what I read? Is that correct?
Mayor, Mayor Protem, City Council, Eric Otzelberger, Director of Parks, Recreation, and Libraries. That is correct. The city was in a lease purchase for a number of years. In running the numbers and with advanced planning and trying to make best use of our resources, we decided we could pay-as-you-go with our excellent maintenance crew, take care of the equipment, extend the life of the equipment beyond a decade, and probably save about $30,000, $35,000 of interest payments during that life.
save about $30,000, $35,000 of interest payments during that life. So it's, it's not a huge savings, but with some advanced planning and wise resource management, that's why we're here this evening to recommend this approach.
Well, I see that lease is not up till next year, right?
So this is just, this is some of the equipment, so not all. So we're staggered. But you are correct, the last with, with, and it's not this equipment, but some of the, the remainder of the equipment is on that existing master lease that sunsets and it will make the last payment appropriation dependent with the 2026 budget.
So will there be more equipment we need to buy when that lease expires?
There, there is additional equipment at both.
Is that what, is that what the 39,000 contingency is for?
No.
What is that for?
So that, that is, you know, in partnership with procurement, we were able to get further cost savings for this and actually an 18% reduction with this Sourcewell National Cooperative. That contingency, though, is just in, in case of the bill themselves and, you know, just with a lot of things going on in the world these days, you know, by the time we place our order, you know, if there's some sort of hedge, that, that's what that contingency is for. So it's not to purchase additional equipment. And, and all of this is like-for-like replacement. So we're not adding to the fleet. This is just replacing equipment.
So how long do you think we can keep it? You think it'll go 10 years instead of five? Like we're, the leasing was five to seven, but I see this one was only five. So you think we can make it last 10 years instead of five or seven?
I, I have the utmost confidence in the Gulf Westminster team and with, with our in-house mechanic, especially with those Toro mowers, we, we can get a decade plus out of them.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor, okay, motion? Counselor Demont.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to authorize the City Manager to execute the purchase of Toro maintenance equipment from LLC Johnson Distributing Company using the Sourcewell Cooperative purchasing contract in the amount of $390,141 plus 10% contingency of $39,015 for a total authorized expenditure not to exceed $429,156.
Mayor Protem.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass agenda item 8E. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Demont.
Yes.
Counselor Azadi. Counselor Ha.
Yes.
Mayor McNally.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Normella.
Yes.
Counselor Ireland.
Yes.
And Counselor Carmelia.
Yes.
The motion passes on a 7-0 vote.
That brings us to Counselors Bill Number Seven. Counselor Demont.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to pass Council Bill Number Seven on second reading to approve the comprehensive plan amendment for Uplands filing three, Block One, Track A, and Block Three.
Mayor Protem.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass Counselors Bill Number Seven. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Azadi. Counselor Ha.
Yes.
Mayor McNally.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Normella.
Yes.
Counselor Ireland.
No.
Counselor Carmelia.
Yes.
And Counselor Demont.
Yes.
The motion passes on a 6-1 vote.
It's 8:39, and I will close the public meeting and open the Westminster Economic Development's meeting script and, meeting and incorporating the roll call from the previous meeting. And do we have a motion for the minutes of April 14th? Counselor Demont, or Board Member Demont.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to approve the minutes of the April 14th, 2025 Westminster Economic Development meeting as presented.
Vice Chair Normella.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of April 14th. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to the new business. Counselor, or Board Member Demont.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to authorize the Executive Director to execute an agreement to furnish activation services with the Westminster Chamber of Commerce for activation in downtown Westminster.
Vice Chair Normella.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to authorize item three, excuse me, 3A under new business. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Demont.
Real quickly, I just want staff to describe the mechanism that is being used for the members in the district to be able to tax themselves so that the public understands that. And then I have a couple of quick comments.
Welcome.
Thank you. Lindsay Kimball, Community Services Director. Thank you, Counselor Demont, for the question. There is an existing URA over the area in downtown that generates what we call a tax increment, and we're able to use that money to spend on activations. It's only designed, it only applies to downtown, and it only can be used within the downtown to benefit the downtown.
Great. Thank you very much for clarification. I know that there was a comment from the public, and I understand in most the time when we spend tax dollars, it's for the benefit of the entire city. One could argue that the downtown will benefit the whole city because it will at some point go into the general fund. But it is important to understand that the reason that these funds are being used specifically in that area are part of that mechanism and how it was funded. So I think it's appropriate for us to target those dollars in that area because that's what, that's basically what that is set up for. So thank you very much for the question or the answer. Just real quickly, I want to say that I'm excited about this. I'm excited about where the downtown's at and in the partnership that the chamber is now starting to, well, continuing to form really and solidify, I guess is a better way to put it than start to. And so I, I have high hopes for what's going on. I actually was in the down, and I haven't been down there in a while, to be honest, but I was down there two different times on Saturday, once for the global cleanup and then once for a celebration of a friend. So, and then I actually have lunch down there tomorrow. So I see things are going and happening, and that's what we wanted to see. We were kind of moving at a good track, and then COVID hit and kind of put a pause on a lot of it. So I appreciated all the work of economic development and the business community in the chamber to make sure that we continue to see that area thrive.
Mayor Protem.
I also just want, I was going to ask the same question, so, oh gosh, what are you on this? Board Member Demont be me to it. I do just want to emphasize my support for our ground, ground-up, business-centered approach here where we are taking the energy and multiplying it, utilizing a district fund that is really meant to do that. So I'm just excited to see this continue to move. I know that I'm, I'm down in downtown a lot to get coffee or to eat or whatever the case may be. But, so I, I just love the idea that we will be continuing to feed this and that we have business owners that want to see this, you know, activity to further bring more folks down there. And yeah, so thank you, staff. Thank you to the chamber for making this happen.
Board Member Ireland.
So I have a couple of questions, especially for you, probably. How much money do we have in the metro tax district right now?
So the URA is, is different from metro district, just to clarify that. There is a URA, and there is also a general improvement district overlay, which adds 35 mils to the taxpayers just in the downtown area. And they voted to establish that and to keep that continuing. So right now, we, we generally will use any funds to pay down. There's a debt service on the certificates of participation that we use, and we use some of that increment to pay that down. We also use that to pay for improvements to downtown, to just streetscapes, adding streetlights as we get development and so forth. You know, I'm just going off of memory from the last time I looked, but there's in the, the reserve fund, there's approximately 1.8, 1.9 million right now, and we do have that allocated for other capital projects throughout the year.
Can it be used for core services by your department?
It is reserved specifically for downtown. It's both the URA increment and the GID increment can only be used in downtown. I will defer any further to Mr. Frankel, but.
Fired, fired station downtown? I mean, can it use be downtown, any core stuff, streets, right?
Definitely streets.
Streets.
Yes. And we do use it.
Because we've had some general funds go through the streets down there on top of these funds.
Yes. So interesting, and please, Mr. Frankel, stop me if I mistake this, but we are, the city is not absolved from its standard level of service, just as with any other area of the city or of the community or neighborhood. So the URA and the GID in particular are there to provide services above and beyond at a higher standard. So you imagine there's a base standard of pipes and sewers and streets and pothole filling. The extra increment is there to provide, I like to say, greater frequency, higher level, higher quality materials in downtown.
Okay. Has any of the developers come forward and said they would put some money towards this? Because in the orchard, the businesses and the developers pay for these, these events. So it's my, so I have a problem with suddenly taxpayer going to the events instead of those who are invested in, the taxpayers invested in them, basically.
So I, so I do know, and I, I don't want to speak for the chamber, but I know as I've spoken with Jamie and her team there, they're very interested in launching and springing forward from this pilot project, this pilot year that we have of the first 12 months of this relationship that we're starting out on. And they hope to be able to, through success, be able to generate those private sponsorships that will allow them to leverage even more. And I know that even with this year, they're actively trying to get corporate sponsorship, selling a package of events, doing things like that, that folks like the Orchard and Belmar Station or Bellevue, you know, are, are working on and how they operate, where they find different sponsors. But we need, you know, success breeds success. So we, we like to build upon that and allow for this pilot, pilot project time.
So will this, will this be something of an ask every year, $300,000 every year?
You know, I think we, we need to see the performance.
Because that's a lot of money.
Yes, ma'am. And, and I do want to point out, part of the contract is performance. So we get quarterly performance reports, we're meeting monthly, bi-weekly in some cases when there's multiple events with the chamber to say, how's it going? How many people attended? So those performance reports are part of the request for payment process, and we'll be reviewing those.
Or what, how good a performance do we have to have to get more money? I would like to know what the basis is for that and how many people we have to have to make it worthwhile.
So great question. Thank you.
And per person, yes. I'm, I'm asking that about all the events in our city, not just this.
Yes.
Because there's a lot of events that there has been a very low attendance and is costing per person a lot of money. So that's just putting it out there. Thank you.
Board Member Ha.
Yes, I actually don't have any, any additional questions. But I do want to thank the chamber, and I do want to thank staff for this collaboration. I will be voting yes. I do think that there is a possibility that we get more tax revenue than what we're spending on these events. And as someone who lives a couple of blocks from the downtown, I'm there a lot, and it was actually Neighbor Night Out last year. So it was one of the, the events that we had at the downtown. That's actually where we discovered Vatos Tacos. And so we frequent that a lot, that, that establishment quite often, and they are a place that has vegetarian and pescatarian tacos. So I am very excited to vote yes, because I know that the better our businesses do, the better that our city does, and the more resources that our residents have. So thank you very much.
Board Member Carmelia.
Thank you. You said it best, success breeds success. So here's hoping. I really appreciate that. I did say a lot earlier, I also just want to say that we cannot let things try to focus, we can't let things be on their own sometimes. We need a really focused effort to revitalize the effort since the area since COVID. And so I just think that this does exactly that. You know, we can't just let an area stagnate, and we have to make sure that we put focused effort and focused dollars. And so what we're doing is investing in our community, investing in our businesses, and investing in our city, as I said earlier. So I'm just really grateful for all your work. I know that this took a lot of time, and I'm really grateful to the chamber for stepping up and leading this effort. It's no small feat, and I'm really excited for the future. And I just want to double down on what was said earlier about being there. I'm there probably three, four times a week. So I am within walking distance, and you'll see me a lot.
Thank you for coming. I don't have any questions for you. I just want to say to the chamber, thanks for being here tonight and speaking. And I do look at you, Jamie, and wonder where the batteries go in because you are everywhere. And you're probably not a lot in, in your office because I don't know how many ribbon cuttings I see a week. Just all the events and the things that you do, I worry about life balance. And so take care of you, but thanks for all your energy. And, and I know you have a, a ton of people behind you, all the ambassadors and, and people that, that help. So thanks for being here tonight. And if there's nothing else, roll call.
Board Member Carmelia.
Yes.
Board Member Demont.
Yes.
Board Member Azadi. Board Member Ha.
Yes.
Chairperson McNally.
Yes.
Vice Chair Normella.
Yes.
And Board Member Ireland.
No.
The motion passes on a 6-1 vote.
It is 8:51, and the WIDA Economic Development Meeting is adjourned. We will now go to post-meeting, and I'll give everybody five or 10 minutes before we get started with that.
started with that.
meeting, and I'll give everybody five or 10 minutes before we get started with that.
All right, if we could begin, I'll ask Mr. John McConnell, our planning manager, to walk us through this evening. I do want to just provide some overarching comments. From time to time, a neighboring jurisdiction seeks from the city Westminster comments on a development proposal that they feel may warrant comments from us, because it's in an adjacent, has an adjacent possible impact on our community. So this is such a case. We do the same thing for our neighboring jurisdictions as well. So if we have a development that's near a border that we think may impact, we will ask a neighboring jurisdiction to also provide comments. In these cases, it's typically provided by staff as an administrative comment. So in effect, planning will advise and provide comments to that jurisdiction. In this case, because we know that our community is highly engaged in terms of the airport, we know that our city council is highly engaged. And for transparency, we felt that we'd be best serving our community if we brought this forward to you in, in a public meeting, present to you what's being proposed at the airport, talk to you about what staff would comment if it were to be provided at the staff level, and then seek your direction as to whether those comments match what we believe we've heard from you and our community. And if there's any adjustments to those comments that you wish us to make when we provide that referral to, to the county. Right? Any questions before we begin? It's a very brief presentation, and we are presenting on someone else's project, but I think you'll get the scope and the sense of what's being proposed. And then you can ask our staff any questions and provide any direction you wish.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Andrews. John, John McConnell, Planning Manager. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Proton, City Councilors. Please be with you tonight. Mr. Andrews has explained what a referral is. And just to add a little bit of flavor to that, when we get these referrals, staff typically analyzes them. We analyze them across departments and divisions, depending on what the nature of the development proposal is. We usually just check city codes, standards, plans, any sort of road projects, public infrastructure plans that we have that may relate or correlate to the, what's being proposed on the other side. So the referral responses are usually technical in nature. They're, they're very localized. So for example, a recent referral that we received from Jefferson County involved the proposal to build a new auto garage in their jurisdiction, but was adjacent to one of our residential neighborhoods. So in that case, staff felt it was appropriate to request from Jeffco and their applicant additional buffering, something along the lines of the standards that we would impose on developments within our jurisdiction. That's typically the types of referrals we get. Occasionally, we get them from the airport. Of course, that's very different in nature. And so as, as I'll explain a little bit further in the background of this particular case. So we're in receipt of such a referral from Jefferson County Planning and Zoning Division. And it's regarding two projects, but they're related at the Rocky Mountain Metropolitan Airport.
Go ahead.
This aerial photograph shows the southern side of the airport as it's adjacent to the Walnut Creek Golf Preserve. And as you can see there, the road that's coming up diagonally was a former Sims Street. And that, of course, has been realigned, and this section has been removed, and it's now Calendar Drive at the airport. The projects consist of construction of a new taxiway K, and that's indicated in red here. And that's a brand new taxiway. Reconstruction of a portion of the existing taxiway D is indicated in blue. And as I mentioned, a vacation of a portion of that former Sims right-of-way, where taxiway K is intended to go southward across it. The reconstruction of taxiway D is just a part of routine maintenance and repair to address wear and tear of that existing taxiway. The construction of new taxiway K is part of the broader airport master plan that was adopted around 2011, I believe. And the idea is for this new taxiway to access the southwestern area that was shown there where Calendar Drive is and former Sims. And the purpose of it is to provide access to some new and existing aviation-related manufacturing and assembly, maintenance, overhaul operations, and private hangar space to provide those machines and aircraft a means to get onto the runway. It's not anticipated to significantly increase airport traffic. Is, as Mr. Andrews alluded to earlier, we understand the heightened sensitivity around airport activity, and so we're elevating this referral to you. Offer the council a, an opportunity to provide a general comment if it chooses to. Staff has drafted that comment letter for you. And if you agree to the content of the letter, we'd be happy to include that in our referral response back to, to the airport. Also, if the council would like to edit this or provide alternatives, we're happy to take those notes as well and modify that letter if you choose. So that concludes our presentation, and we're happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Councilor Ireland?
The only part of the letter that really, I would like maybe more specific, when I was out at the airport with the presentation, basically, and toward the airport, they told me that they were going to try to get their, all their planes to unleaded fuel by July, because the state has given them a grant to change it over and make the fuel less expensive for the pilots out there. So I don't want to, I want, if we can, I don't want to wait till 2030 for that to happen. And that's what we're saying that they could do. But they told me that they're trying to do it sooner, which I want to incentivize that we say that, that they try to do it sooner. And July was when they told me they were going to try to, their goal was July.
Yeah, councilor, we can definitely add those edits to the draft letter.
And may I provide clarification? We have spoken with the airport leadership about that issue, councilor. What they're shooting, what they're targeting for, for July is the installation of an unleaded fueling station, but not the mandated conversion of the aircraft. But they wanted to get installed an option for unleaded fuel. And there's, then there will be an uptake period after that. So we will reflect that in the letter. We'll capture that, that July date in the letter and make sure that that's highlighted.
And the sooner they can change over the better, because no lead is good. Or we would have lead in cars still. Anyway.
Councilor Demott?
I just, on that note, I was gonna kind of, same thing, same thing the city manager said. I think part of the, the challenge that they have is, is what they can and cannot mandate. And they've had a promise as the county back two years ago, at least, because they went to the, they did a press conference, they had bought a new truck. So they're, they're putting dollars behind trying to incentivize people to actually move unleaded, which is good. And I'm totally, I think it's in a nice partner way to say, you know, we continue to advocate for that, because I think that's consistent with what the council has done. You know, so anywhere where we're advocating for things that we've already, as the council said that we want, which it sounds like you are, you know, in terms of partnership, I will just say for the benefit of the public, too, if you're listening and you care about this issue, when we went on that tour, I was very pleased. I can tell you, being on that roundtable, I'm taking a fair amount of flack for, for the work done there. The, you know, the tone from this leadership is much different. And I'm not saying that's good, better, and different. Well, I am saying it's good, but not to say the other one was bad. This is just much different. The fact that they've hired a PIO, the way that they're trying to increase transparency. And the biggest thing that they mentioned to us that I think is a big change is, they're just making everything public, which, you know, people, it's public anyway. So opposed to then making people go and fish for information to see, you know, look for things. They're just saying, here's what it is and what we're doing. So I just wanted to bring that up, because I thought it was a very encouraging trip in terms of what the new leadership of the airport is doing to make sure that they address the concerns of the community in a very transparent way. So, but I appreciate this coming forward to us and that you, you know, have encapsulated what you've heard from us over the last handful of years to make sure, you know, that we are not just being a partner to them, but also advocating for the concerns of our community.
Anything else?
I, I just want to say I'm really grateful that we have staff to draft a letter like this, because I read it, and I was really impressed at the conciseness and the ability to capture, I think, our concerns and thoughts on this. And also, for the public's benefit, I wanted to highlight one of the pieces on taxiway K, the new runway, which I know that folks might not be excited to hear about a new runway. From our tour, I did learn that that was part of the original master plan that was created. When was that created? I forget, 10, 20 years?
2011.
2011. So quite some time ago. And so this is not directly related to any recent activities. You know, we've noted flight school uptick, for example, over the last four years. I just want to say that this taxiway was drafted in the 2011 plan, and we did hear that, you know, they're due for a new plan soon to figure out what, you know, they're going forward. And they just have a master plan the same way that we do with our city. And this taxiway is completing, I think, the final project or one of the final projects in that plan. We did have some concerns over how much that might increase flight activity. And I'll just reiterate what the letter here says. It is our understanding that the purpose of taxiway K is to open up airport property for economic development opportunities that are not expected to significantly increase takeoffs and landings. And I just want to reiterate that, because we heard that at the tour. That is our expectation. And maybe you could dive in a little bit more. I don't remember correctly what it is for, you know, because they did say it shouldn't significantly increase takeoffs and landings.
Sure. And thank you for the question. And a major point of distinction that I'd like to make for our listening public is a taxiway is very different from a runway. So this is a taxiway. Taxiway are used to move an aircraft from a hangar or gate to, to a runway. So I just want to be really, really clear for everyone who's listening. Planes cannot take off and land from a, from a taxiway. If you are, you're in trouble. You're not supposed to do that, and you shouldn't do that. So what, what this taxiway K is representing is an opportunity to access existing airport property and not expanding the airport boundaries, but allowing them to access that for aviation usage, such as, there is currently, one example is Pilatus. It's a Swiss aircraft manufacturer who has a very large operation at the airport. They employ many people there in very high-paying jobs, aviation mechanics, operators, avionics, installers. The plane comes in, basically a plain vanilla shell. They can kit it out with all of the custom avionics that whoever bought the plane wants to put in their airplane. If they want different leather seats, they do those. So they are adding a lot of value to that aircraft. What I know the airport mentioned to us during the tour was that they would like to add additional aviation-related manufacturing and kitting operations there. Additionally, this would open up the space for what they call maintenance, repair, and overhaul operations, or MRO operations, that could help also create high-quality jobs in aviation mechanics, power plant mechanics. And also, it allows for a very, very valuable commodity, especially in this market, its private plane hangar space. So allowing opportunities, and that's a revenue generator as well. So again, a taxiway won't, a taxiway is not a runway. You cannot take off and land on it. It's not an expansion of the airport. And I, what I heard them say is that they're hoping that this will increase economic activity for the airport in terms of high-quality jobs.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
I don't see anything else.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are we done?
Okay. Thank you, Mayor and Council. We will make the amendments to the letter, and then I'll get that sent out to the airport so they have it in time. They did grant us the ability to get it to them tomorrow, accounting for our meeting this evening. So we'll get that out to them tomorrow, and we'll send a copy of that to City Council for your records. Thank you.
Thank you. It is 9:15, and we're gone.
9:37, so.